What do you call the board? Mrs. Cruzon.
Here.
Mr. Harris. Here. Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. McFerrin.
Here.
Mr. Sack.
Mr. Sack. You would give any signal.
Yes.
Jason, and then we'll try. You're gonna talk to them first.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Brooke. I'm a fourth grade student at the L. What I like to do most about the L. I want to do that all the time. My mom is old and I also go to the L. I'm here wanting to make some good decisions. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Outstanding job. Good job.
Yeah, in the morning. The process.
I wanna welcome everyone this evening. And before we get started, I would like to congratulate all of our students on their Veterans Day presentation. Being a veteran, it was really something to be here the first thing in the morning. The high school performed such an outstanding presentation. It was unbelievable. And then to go down to BL and receive 300 little, young adults, only for that, young children, in the moment of silence, not saying anything. I mean, the honor and the respect that they gave was outstanding. So I wanna thank Mr. Linco, Mr. Corby, Mrs. Whipke, and all the children and all the staff. An outstanding job.
Okay, so changes to the agenda. I do have some additions, which I've provided you with a sheet of those. So Items 13, 14, and 15, and they're also available to the public, so I won't read them right now. Okay, then. Item 3, motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting, which was held October 20th, and the treasurer's financial reports from October 2014.
Your motion?
Motion. Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Item 4, motion to approve the following resignation. Carolyn Reinhardt, Director of Special Education Services, effective November 18, 2014.
Motion.
Second.
Call the roll. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Item 5, motion to grant the following administrative contract to Robert Clunin, which will be a partial two years, and it's gonna start in January through July 31, 2016. And he's in our audience right now.
Motion.
Second. Call the roll. Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Yep.
Item 6, motion to grant permission for the 5th grade to attend the outdoor education program at Canaan Acres, May 18 through 20.
Motion.
Second.
Call the roll. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Item 7, motion to grant permission to Heather Abrams with art motion to use the high school auditorium on December 7, 2014, for Christmas performance on, and then also performance on June 6 and 7 for their annual recital.
Motion. Second.
Call the roll. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Item 8, which is coming at a good time, motion to enter into agreement with ACT excavating for snow removal.
Motion.
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mr. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Item 9, motion to appoint the superintendent as designee for the current board members, all five of you, for the completion of public records training.
Motion.
Second. Yes, I second. Call the roll, please. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
All right, he was excruciating. Item 10, motion to non-renew the following supplemental positions at the close of their duties, and that's gonna be Items 8 through L.
Motion. Second.
Call the roll.
Oh, I have one. I'm not sure. This might be.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Discussion. I don't even know really if it matters. I'm sorry.
That's right.
Bob Weekly was the seventh grade football coach, and I'm assuming, I don't know if that's how it was assigned or maybe switched, but I don't even know that it matters. I just know it was my son. So.
For both?
Only was for both?
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Sorry.
Okay. Call the roll. Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Item 11 is reassignment, to reassign Katie Butler from elementary girls' basketball coach to 8th grade girls' basketball coach, and then Item B, Lori Dehoff, junior high student council advisor to a co-advisor.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Call the roll. Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Item 12, motion to grant one-year supplemental contracts for the 2014-15 school year. Items A through D.
Motion.
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Item 12, motion to grant one-year supplemental contracts for the 2014-15 school year.
Items A through D.
Motion.
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Item 12, motion to grant one-year supplemental contracts for the 2014-15 school year. Items A through D.
Motion.
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Item 14, motion to approve a one-year limited contract for the 2014-15 school year at the current salary schedule for Ashley Halter as a substitute teacher. That'll be as needed.
Motion.
Call the roll. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mr. Sack.
Yes.
Item 15, motion to accept and approve the revised admission statement for the Seabury local schools.
Motion.
Second. Call the roll. Mrs. McFerrin.
Yes.
Mr. Sacko.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruzon.
Yes.
Mr. Harris. Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Item 16, comments from SLEA. 17 comments from the public, and I know Jen wants to speak.
I just wanted to report out, I run the Box tops and Campbell's labels at the L. Need a lot of help from PIE, couldn't do it without them. And we have rotating trophies every month, and this past month, I was able to purchase several things through our Campbell's point, and we're going to be using the box money that we've earned to get some Chromebooks, and so I thought it'd be nice to come out. You guys know what we're doing and where we sit on that. Our winners for September, home rooms were Julie Naples with first place, Vicki Hollingsworth's home room with second place, and Kathy Schrader's home room with third place in September. And in October, Vicki Hollingsworth, her home room was first place, Janelle Thorne's home room was second place, and Shawnee Shakers' home room was third place. We'll be getting a check for $390.70 in December from Box tops. We actually earned a little more than that, but through processing, didn't really get our money there. I wanna thank Copland Oaks, they mail in Box tops and handles for us pretty regularly. We couldn't do it without them as well, and I will be sending out certificates of participation that's written for the Box tops as well. And things that we've purchased, we were able to get two sets of fitness dice for the gym class for Mr. Pete, and there are dice that have different exercises and things, so fitness and stations. 15 binoculars for the science lab. A DVD Family's In The World, which is still for the library, our sixth graders do the world spare, so that'll be a valuable resource. And then a book for the library, A School Like Mine, which compares schools around the world to, um, in the United States, which I thought would also help with that. And something else I found interesting, our current goal this year for Box tops is $1,000. And our lifetime earning for BL, which has been since 2010, is $6,567.66 in Box tops. Thank you for calling us, we're so glad.
Thanks Jen, actually, for taking charge of all that. I know it's a lot of work.
That's a lot of work.
I couldn't do it without PIE this year.
PIE, good. Well, thank you to PIE, too.
Did that be good PR for the review, especially for Copland?
There is.
I know you got to go, I mean, I'm Brooks Souls, coach and co-owner of the Ohio Gladiators and my club football team, trying to get it done. I'm missing here in the field for upcoming season. Apparently, there's been some miscommunication on cost and what's going on, and I'm trying to, the record's straight here, so we can finally get a definite approval and get them going right directions, and your schedule said, everything done. Apparently, there was some miscommunication, you said you didn't know about the money that would be taken to the rental, the additional costs for custodian, somebody would be watching the government, the locker room or whatever. We're not asking for any kind of handout whatsoever, we're prepared to pay all costs whatsoever, plus even add additional 20% of the gate, to get it to the athletic department as a donation for Ohio Gladiators Field. Half our active roster is from town here, we're just trying to give the guys something to do, kids couldn't make it to college, kids couldn't make it to college, something to do other than, you know, just play around, and we come downtown anyway. So, you know, really important to us, and it's not like, apparently, there was a team that was here in town a couple of years ago, where the guy just folded up and took off with everybody's money. We're not like that. I've got two kids here in town, go to school, I grew up here in town, my other coach and co-owner, he's from town, he's got kids here at the school, we're not going anywhere, we're here for the long haul. And because of the change in our Ohio football regulations, we now have to have locker rooms for the teams that come into town from Pittsburgh and, you know, uptown, otherwise, we wouldn't need facility as bad. But we should, we're gonna pay all costs and everything, the additional upkeep of learning center for the field. And then there was some question about the timeframe, which when you build, if we can get our first game changed, our last home game will be on July 11. So you have to come July 11, quick though. If not, by last week, it'll be August 1st. We're trying to get that together here, so hopefully, get approved, we'll have a new deal.
Any questions?
Did the locker room situation, that was one of the concerns, I know that we had said before, without you saying that they would have to have use of the locker room?
Yes, they're required by OFL regulations, except for locker room for each hour. And because it was being a weekend, just somebody would be on call or whatever for that day, two hours, and the overtime or whatever, what the parents pay for that cost. I'm not asking for free, I'm not asking for it free, we're gonna pay for everything it's gonna cost, and then, you know, it's a win-win for the whole team, for the whole town. And the boosters can do concessions, that gets the restaurants here in town with money, everybody, like I said, grandparents and stuff, for the guys here in town, they shouldn't have to drive an hour for a home game, because it makes closer fields to Atlanta. You know, it's, you know, the kids' dad and parents and others, grandparents, we're all here in town. And like I said, we'll take additional 20%, whatever the gate is, if we make a thousand, we'll make another 200 bucks. I'm talking.
Where did you play your home games last year?
We played, first two games at Walsh College, and then we played our last two games at , well, two games at Lendoson High School, and then we played our final game here on the field. Our coach Springer, I don't know what he did, he was talking, but he got a pretty good player last year. With the concern about tearing up the field or whatever, the guys practice out on the field, you know, five, eight weeks, and their whole season, they don't tear up the field that bad. We're gonna play one hour every other week for a month and a half.
Where do you guys practice?
We practice at Stanley Middle School and over FA at the State Center, we practice out back there. We're trying to locate indoor facility, first range search, hopefully, we'll have the whole somewhere there, but recently, we've used these diamonds, turning center in the air, to indoor soccer field, $60 an hour, that's somewhere else there, and then I just bought it. That's all I have, and.
Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Good luck. Thank you.
Just give me a call tomorrow afternoon. Okay, I have a couple more items worthy of your note. Kelsey Wagner, Cody Dennis have been selected as the Elks' Teenagers of the Month for October. Destiny Green and Chris Clement have been selected as the Elk's Teenagers of the Month for November. And then school director, I'm assuming she's referring to the one.
We wanted to also discuss packets that we received from Mr. Hill about the OCC, when the buildings were built back in 98. Thick packets.
Okay, first question I have, and there's a lot to go through here, everything that you submitted to us. I guess my first question is, you had given us a summary of, there were 517 items on the, is it blue tab? I have the blue tabs in here. Is it in the blue tab section?
All together, all the expenses, bringing up projects.
Okay, so that's all here. And then the receipts that you submitted to us, there were like a little over 30, I believe?
Just for the question.
So these are the ones that you would think that we could take to the state basically and say, this is?
Well, that was the request.
Okay.
Right.
For the.
Questionable, right.
The money, you said, probably in 2004, 2000, yeah, 2004 till now.
And two of the, I was confused on two of the checks and purchase orders that don't match up. They both are for Gardner Train. The one, I'll start with this one. The one is, it says for switch, and it says mechanical troubleshooting was the description for it, and on the actual purchase order, it's a total price of $18,778. And then the check that was cut was for the amount of $1,185.51. And then on the overall summary page, it is the amount of $15,768.68.
How, what number of voucher package, that number's in the right, upper right?
Yep, the number is 408149.
I think what happened there, and I don't know for sure, I have a list of voucher packages, and I pulled them, this was like a blank purchase order, and so there were several different, so it seems to me that a few of the voucher packets must be missing from this stack, but I can certainly get those to the board. Oftentimes, we do a blank purchase order, and then we pay out things over time. And Gardner Train was used here for two or three years, and they did a lot of work on the system. As a matter of fact, Gardner Train, over a period of about four years, I believe, they paid a total of $8,288. Now, that information is not on your cover letter, it's included, and if you see on the cover letter where I say that we spent approximately $391,000 on HDAC maintenance, of that $391,000, about a quarter of a million was gone from people, and there's stuff, I just haven't pulled all the voucher packets.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, I just couldn't understand why it wasn't matching up on that, and there was just a couple like that, and they both were Gardner Train, so I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I couldn't understand.
Okay.
Yeah, the amounts were all.
There's also one of, is it NOK Corporation?
Yeah, there was one of these.
It, it is 402912. Yeah, 402912. And the purchase order was for the amount of 533815. And all the receipts and everything that I have, I can only come up with 393426. Difference about 140389.
Uh, the voucher package, uh, there's an invoice on the second page of that voucher package, there should be copies of invoice 533815. Do you have that?
Yes.
And I believe that's the invoice for this voucher package.
Okay.
The other supporting documents for that invoice are the work orders, that's for the work that they completed, and I can tell this was about 12 years, you know?
Right. Looks like there was a 30, like I said, 359750, and a 36676. That'd bring us up to the 393426.
Okay, so you're adding up all of the, all of the attachments that?
Yes, that's correct.
And your total is $3,000?
393426.
393426. I don't have an answer for you, I have to look this way.
Okay, one other question I have here, too, on the overall summary packet, it's what it usually is, one, two, it's the fourth page in, and it's the purchase order 2023116. And it was in the amount, it was one of the ones you highlighted, it was the amount of And the description on this was repair of aerial fiber, and you have squirrel on it, could squirrel chew the fiber, I'm assuming? How can we send this to the state saying that this is something that we took money from the state fund because a squirrel chewed through our fiber, and now we expect the state to pay for this?
Well, at the time, I didn't bear to understand, at the time, what was the purchase order number?
It was 202316.
It's in the receipts as well.
Yes, it's in the receipts.
The description, when they actually, I don't know. I do recall that it's been, at the time, I believe the board in place at the time, and there was a discussion about the cable wasn't shielded, and the cable runs from here to the elementary school, it runs down this alley here, and there's places where it's open, and places where it goes through trees, and it was supposed to be shielded, where it went through the tree, for the steel cover, so that animals put up, obviously, you know, have to eat things with it. And, you know, there again, that's 15 years ago, but I believe that's the case, I can do a little bit of research on it, and so, at the time, we believed that the cable wasn't properly connected when it was initially installed, so that's why that money.
There's another one, pipe, frozen ice, that we had built on, I think, for the, you know, repair of the.
That was BL Miller. Okay. The reason that money was charged to the construction fund was because the BL Miller, there was, it failed to put insulation above the gymnasium and above the stage of the gymnasium. Of course, we didn't know.
It froze.
It froze, and we had a 10 below zero day, and the only thing that was between the inside, up in the ceiling area, and the outside, was a piece of sheet metal about an eighth inch thick, and so the pipe froze. And when the pipe thawed, of course, it started, water started to gush out, and the fire system, you know, breaker system, it set off an alarm, which caused the custodians at the elementary to be contacted, which then caused five custodians and myself to be cleaning up the gymnasium on Christmas. So that was, if the building had been properly insulated, that would never have froze, and so, you know, cost involved.
Did we file an insurance claim on that? Do you know?
I don't know for sure, I'd have to go back and look in the record. I don't think we did. Generally, if we have something that happens that's not a lot over $1,000, we don't file a claim, because it drives up our rates, and we have a $1,000 deficit, so we're gonna pay $1,000 out of our pocket.
Some of the others that I am kinda concerned about, it's just been so much time that has passed, and, you know, some of these receipts were for, you know, since 2000, it's recent, it's 2012. And the one, big one, is the new phone system.
Correct.
And this was almost $32,000. And again, this was dated June 12, 2012.
14 years after.
We're almost 14, you know, at least well over 10 years plus.
Right. The project was created in 2001. We occupied the high school in September, I think, in 2001, we occupied the elementary school in April, 2001. At the time, the reason money was taken out of that is because the board was deciding that the phone system was substandard, it was injured. Think about a phone system that's put into an establishment like this, should last 20, 30 years, okay? As near as I can recall on that, it's been a couple years ago, so it's pretty fresh in my memory, we had long discussion about that, and we decided to pull it by now construction because the phones have never failed, I mean, they should have never failed in 11 years. And they did, and the system failed, and so we believed that had they put in, you know, better quality phones to begin with, we wouldn't have faced with that.
Did you talk to anyone about that? When you did the new phone system, when you replaced the pipes, when you had the cable fixed, I mean, all these things are making sense, but it's still, like, taken from the building funds that had already been closed evidently, so was anyone contacted, just maybe for substandard phones, this one was done properly, so now what's the best? I mean, sometimes, when you're dealing with. I mean, sometimes, when you're dealing with money, it's just why we think the person that you owe the money back to, whether or not that can be allocated is something that they would agree on.
Right. I'd ask the back of the records, look, I know there were times when, you know, if there's any contact and I can't do the dates, you know, I'll try and find any information. I really don't think you have that information.
But, I mean, before that was done, would you have said approved by, and I know people have changed a lot down there, but approved by, you know, Mr. Jones, the date of one thirteen thirteen, whatever? I mean, just so you have something documented, yes, we talked and it approved the money?
In the case of the phone...
Just overall, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, any purchase made that would have possibly been in question as to, is this, you know, is this our opinion and is that not their opinion? Any way along, and from the beginning, as to how the money was to be spent? And we don't know the guidelines as to saying, here's sixteen million dollars. I'm sure there were guidelines and specifications how that was to be spent and what was to be spent on.
Sure. I mean, all of that, all of that stuff was in by the construction manager back then. All that we did was, you know, part of the construction, through the construction manager, we bought the invoices, I paid them out of the fund, you know? And there was a lot of things, you know, recorded and there was a lot of money paid out, there was a lot of money taken in. After the project was pretty much done, and there was a certain amount of money left in the account, probably back in two thousand four, that's two hundred seventy six thousand dollars. I just don't know at this point. I don't have anything on, with the fact these voucher packets that said this is approved by O S F C, so and so. I know for considerable while, as the projects were going on, a gentleman by the name of Franklin Brown was the charge down there. And I know I had several conversations with him on the phone and those kind of things, but was it well documented? No, I don't think so. I still have documents to go through. Obviously, I probably could pull all four hundred voucher packets.
Did you keep a ledger or a journal or file balance records at the end of the month showing this was coming in and where it was going? It kind of made you...
Yeah, I'm sure we have all the libraries and all the stuff from back then. Yeah, we absolutely did track up. There was a lot of things to be tracked up.
Exactly.
There were dentures being earned on space lines, dentures being earned on local money, there was donations being given for the auditorium, you know, yeah, there's a lot around. I mean, we're talking about months of gathering data.
Mr. Minister, you said though that if, we were actually moved into the buildings in two thousand and one. So on the overall one oh balance fund that you gave us sheet?
Right.
How was the revenue? Because the revenue would have been, what, eighty nine percent state funding, eleven percent local funding. So the money, I'm assuming, that the money would have been put in there from ninety eight ninety nine start through two thousand and one, if we've already done the construction, which in ninety nine, there was four hundred and thirty six, almost four hundred and thirty seven thousand revenue. Two thousand, there was ten point two million put in there. And two thousand and one, it was five point two million. And then there were also expenditures going out. But by two thousand and two, there was another eighty two thousand. In two thousand and three, there was ninety nine thousand. And in two thousand and four, there was one million put in that account. Where was that money coming from, if there was money going into this construction fund account?
I don't know exactly about one and four of all these receipts, which I haven't done. I can, I can pretty much speculate that when the bonds were sold, we sold the bonds for about a million eight. And they went into another fund, the fund oh oh four, that doesn't exist anymore. That fund was a, was a construction, our building fund. So those money's going to mingle with the state. And then there was a point in time when that money had to be transferred into oh one. Okay? So most of the money that came in two thousand probably came into the state, pretty much in the first place. Also, the money that came in two thousand and one, I would assume, was both for that company. Eighty two thousand in two thousand and two, that could have been interesting, that could have been moved in from two thousand, from fund oh oh four, could have been. I know that in two thousand and four, seven hundred, I don't have, I have to... In two thousand and four, that million twenty three, from my research, I found that seven hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and fifty one dollar income state on paper, we never got the money, we didn't get a check from the state. They sent us a, more of a ledger balance, or a memo check, if you will. And we credited seven hundred and forty two thousand eight fifty one. Then we spent right that same day, seven hundred and forty two thousand eight fifty one, to show that the cost of the project from the construction manager, who the state hired and who the state paid, was run through our books. So they'd already paid the construction manager. They just wanted to see the money in and out in our books.
On paper, okay.
So I got a pay in and a payout the same day. And we now saw in a month, two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and twenty five dollars, four cents was transferred in from oh oh four. I do know that. Because I, when I saw a million dollars, I looked at that myself and thought, you know, that can't be right. And so when I, when I looked back and finally got up the receipt, that's when I found that seven forty two, eight fifty one was just transferred in and then transferred out. And the, and the rest of it came from oh oh four. And there again, to give you an idea of all the money that came into oh oh four, we got all the receipts somewhere, we got all the expenditures, you know, that money was put in there for the gymnasium, or not the gymnasium, the auditorium. And there's a whole lot of stuff to do.
Mr. Hill, on the total receipts and everything, it says sixteen million, four hundred and six thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty five cents. But in our revenue, it comes up to seventeen million, one hundred and twenty three thousand, four hundred and seventy eight dollars and forty five cents. That's a difference of about a million, eighty six thousand, nine hundred and forty eight dollars. Can you, how's that?
I don't have an answer for you without, you know, I'll certainly answer your question. I'll have to...
Yeah, these are, yeah. No, that's, I understand that, yeah.
I didn't total these columns. Obviously, if the revenue coming in and expenditures going out, whatever it was, it left us a balance in two thousand and four of two seventy six, two eighty two. So obviously, around two thousand and four, we had two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars in there that could have gone to paying the state back to three hundred and thirteen.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, on your building fund, zero one zero, your total expenditures is seventeen million. But on the state's thing that we have here, it says that the total expenditures is sixteen thousand, four hundred and eight for receipts. Well, actually, it's total expenditure, sixteen thousand thirty six. Yeah, sixteen million thirty six. So that's where, I'm wondering where the state and our balance of the fund is different, about a million dollars or so.
Do you have a copy of this? This, we got this from the state.
I don't have a copy of it, you know?
I started there.
That was a big thing that stuck out with me, was, you know, ours has got seventeen million, and state's saying, you should have only spent sixteen million. So that's...
So if that's why it matters, they approved our budget at the beginning. At the very beginning, with our budget approval, which is including our contribution, the sixteen million, seven hundred and seven thousand and ten. So that's very, very close to the original...
Original approval. We're over by a million on expenditures according to the numbers we've given here.
And revenue, too.
Yeah, expenditures and revenue are both over by a million, one point one in revenue and one million in expenditures. It's all.
So that's very close to the original.
Right, the original, right.
From what I can tell here, it says approved budget was seventeen originally. And then shows how much of that should have been paid. I wouldn't really have to study the document to see, you know, I'd have to figure what they're saying there is...
Have you called down there yet to the O C C since the last meeting?
No.
Okay.
I know I have a document that looks like it's...
That was my big, I mean, a million dollars is not something just to sneeze at, that's... If there's a difference of that much, we need to find out exactly where it came from or what happened. And the other question I have is, in two thousand and seven, we upgraded the network equipment option two, is that right through data service? That was eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty one? What did we do, what did that all include? What?
Part, I can recall, my understanding is that all of the switches and the power packs in our technology room went bad.
Okay.
Okay? I don't know how many switches and how many routers and how many things there are. I'm sure that the, look at the voucher packet, there's probably a lot.
Right.
I don't recall why they went bad. I know that the switches that were put in there, you know, according to the people that defined the new technology, non-technology, were substandard switches. I don't know what brand they were.
Okay.
But there was also power packs. And as I recall, there was about nine thousand dollars spent on power packs. So that's the nine thousand dollars.
So that's weird, because of the substandard equipment that was put in the school originally, is what, okay, okay.
Is there any way, when a lot of these problems came about, and ninety two thousand dollars is a lot of money, would you do a way to go back on, do you ever initially install them and say, you know, we have a problem here and we'd like your help in making this right, so that we didn't have to go all the way up and start over again? Were any of these people, were you able to contact anyone and say, hey, we'd really wish to be right because there's been something wrong in the first place?
I did not contact any vendor correctly. That wasn't my, actually, I didn't have the...
Your capacity right now.
But at this point, you know, what was it like, six years later? Would you have a back point been able to, or to call the state, or to just let someone go, we've got a little issue here and we need it resolved?
I'm sure there was a discussion with somebody at the state, or, you know, with the media, or there was something, I don't know if it's anywhere in the record. I know that there were discussions with the construction manager, Carboni, Carboni went out of business and now they're calling Scoparati. You know, there was a disagreement early on about how much money was due back to the state. I know, I've got the documents somewhere, that originally, they want a four hundred and forty thousand dollars back, and I said no. And after they checked and double-checked their record, they come up with a new number, it was three hundred and thirty thousand. This document here, the one that you handed me, it shows how they arrived with three hundred and thirty thousand.
Right.
Basically, what this says is that there was X number of dollars in revenue, and X number of dollars in expenditures, and the difference between the revenue and expenditures, somewhere, there's a number that comes up to three hundred and seventy two thousand, seventy one dollars and sixty four cents.
And Pete, with that, in saying that, that's where we got expenditures of seventeen million, so we may, the state may owe us money.
Well, I doubt that, but...
Well, I'm just saying that.
It looks like that could be the case, but without really examining the documents and taking some time to look at it, you know, all this document tells me that, and I believe this document originated from Scoparati, Carboni, okay, that three hundred and seventy two thousand dollars should have left in the pocket. And that the eighty nine eleven percentage swing between the state and us would have given three thirty five seventy four back to the state.
Back to the state, right.
Forty one thousand, quarter, and then back it up.
Right.
And of course, you could have spent that forty one thousand on whatever we used to spend it on.
Yeah, right. It was our money, yeah.
Other than that, without examining these numbers and working it all out, it's kind of hard to do that, unfortunately.
Oh, no, absolutely, no, we, these are just things that we would like for you to research for us and everything, because, you know, the, like I said, I mean, expenditures seventeen million, and the project was sixteen million.
I'm not so sure, from what I read here, Ray, I don't know if the expenditures were at one point, what's...
Sixteen million?
Oh, no, this first call is one point seven.
So that's the local share?
Right, right, one point seven.
Yeah. But with the state's money and everything, it comes out to a total of sixteen million?
Yeah, the state's fourteen million ninety, brings the total up to sixteen million and seven.
Right.
And it looks like they list the receipts here, and the local interest is eighty one thousand, state interest is three twelve. So when they add the interest in, it takes that total revenue to sixteen million, four oh eight, six oh two.
Right.
And then it says that the co-funded expenditures for the project were fifteen million, eight forty six, oh, and fifty seven. The difference between those two numbers.
Right. And that's where you'll come up with the three hundred and seventy two thousand, is the difference between the total co-funded expenditures and the total receipts.
Yeah, they've got a hundred and ninety thousand in there, the co-funded expenditures.
From the allowance, right.
I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. But what I'm saying is, on our building fund, zero one zero, our revenue was seventeen million. And so that's where I'm questioning where...
Yeah. And, yeah, so it does, it does call for an answer for sure. And I will find one. And I don't have it right now.
Oh, no, absolutely.
The other piece of this, before my voice broke, is that, as I mentioned in this first paragraph here, we spent almost six hundred thousand dollars, since the building was occupied, we spent almost six hundred thousand dollars on H D A C and electric devices. Of that six hundred thousand, obviously, some of it's going to be normal, and some of us going to be too imperfect construction managers. And my guess, from, you know, the fact that I've been there for a while and I've seen some of these expenditures, my guess is that we're probably about fifty fifty. You know, about three hundred thousand dollars was spent to fix problems. I mean, I've never really compiled a list of all the problems, and I need to do that. There are, there are still some ongoing problems. This gymnasium has leaked for years, not bad, but around the plastic windows that run along the tops of the gym, that are of low quality. You know, the fact that we have leaks in the ceiling, because it comes down through the bricks and comes down on any place where a wall extends over the floor. So those are ongoing problems that we try to deal with in our way. And, you know, they're, 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 they're...
So everything that was on this, overall, called the general, there was the detailed review, the summary that you provided us, everything, the five hundred and seventeen items, those were all, I want to say approved, I guess is the word, by the state? This was all, this is all been paid for? This is all from that money of that sixteen or seventeen million, whatever that number might be?
Yeah, everything that was done, even the things that weren't necessarily approved by the O S F C, was all people. We don't know any vendors any money.
So that's my question though, so some of it may or may not have been approved, and I have no idea, I know this goes back and you may or may not even remember this, there were some things on this list, I was a little bit dumbfounded by, and I just had to bring this one up. The murals at both the BL and the high school cost roughly... roughly thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
That was approved?
Yeah, by the state.
By the state, wow. And then the other thing, there are several on here that just say miscellaneous work. There weren't any details, even on the bills, it just said miscellaneous work, and they range from fifty-three hundred dollars, one was four thousand, uh, somewhere was a hundred, a hundred and ninety, but we, is that acceptable, that we can just say miscellaneous work, we're trying, we're, here's a bill we buy those loads and we pay for, we don't know exactly what it's for?
Are some of those, are there alder packets, are some of them?
Uh, you know what, they were in here, I'd have to look and find them at this point.
You know, I mean, um, obviously, we could, we could do it now after...
They are.
Gather them.
They are...
I could, I could, you know...
Three of them.
...alder packets, and, you know, there would have been documentation that would have, it would have been approved by, uh, by Carbone.
Yeah, that was it. That's when he's going to check one.
Okay, that, it actually was, the one was...
The one that I, I asked about that came up with three thousand instead of the five thousand.
Yeah, that was the one. And the others, that four thousand is, is on these written.
Did that one move some?
Four two, so four oh two nine oh eight.
It just said miscellaneous work.
Yeah, it just says four oh two.
At, like, BL, miscellaneous at high school.
Right, and they had no details.
They must have done some touch-up work or something.
You know, I should share with the board also that all of these documents that we have, and then audit, and audit, and all of the audits, we never had, we never had a single finding, I don't think I've had a single finding in my twenty-six year career.
So, when the state comes in and audits, they audit this construction fund as well?
They sure do. They audit everything, everything, and so all this stuff's been audited, all of it.
Mr. Hill, how, how long would it take to get something together so that we could present it to the state and say, here's where we expended these funds, and, you know, we have the hundred and two left, or whatever, we, we give that back to you and, and, and we're done, we, we're complete?
Um, that's a good question. Uh, I don't really know for sure, at least two to three months, I would say, it's not, it's not like I can spend, um, you know...
Absolutely, I...
Days and weeks doing this because there's day-to-day operations.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
So it's going to take...
Okay.
Well, I have a question, why? I mean, who are we, or who can we contact the state? Why can't we have the state come to us, sit down, have a chat with us, to find out exactly what we need to do, what we want, or we can ask questions for the next ten years if someone said, and asked them all.
I already contacted, I did contact the state, so hopefully she'll be contacting us.
We need to have them come here.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I wonder, when we could get all this together.
Be ready first before they come, so that's why...
Well, you know what, I think with even what we have here, if they would tell us what they want, and then get ready, they need to come in front of us and tell us what they want. You can, you can go back and have fourteen years of stacking of paper here and then they'll look at it, probably laugh at it, that's my opinion, or if they could have a, get this ready, get this in detail, or get things ready so they can sit down and build through it. They have to have detailed work also. Uh, it's just, we're here, um, they gotta have something, we gotta have something, and they probably may just wipe their hands if they didn't get the state to do anything.
Well...
Well, you know, I think the board doesn't understand.
And I'm sorry to say that, but that's just my opinion, but I think the state, they need to come here first and tell us what they want.
Well, it is the state's money, so if they will, if they do want their money, they will come, so...
Yeah, they may very well come and say, you owe us four, yeah, three hundred thousand, and then want to figure out a way to pay it. Um, you know, it's like I shared with the board, from, from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand, there's a hundred and eighty-one projects. Of those hundred and eighty-one projects, seventy-nine haven't been completed yet, and we're one of them. And a school district, you know, it's not very far from here, Wyndham, and I, and I tried to call the treasurer, the president, but it was free treasurer until their project was done, uh, I've heard that they owe the state a million dollars, so I'd like to know from the treasurer at Wyndham how they're going to pay that back, or what the state's done with them, because all the schools, Wyndham, Steesbury, Westbury, a lot of schools, not Westbury, you're actually Wyndham, Stewbridge, and some other poor schools, we were the twenty-ninth poorest in the state, that's why, that's why we only had a fund eleven percent of the project. They, the, the poor school districts in the state were the guinea pigs for the specifications to build these buildings, and so if, if, if it didn't work, or there was a problem, these poor school districts, like Stewbridge, how are we going to be able to pay for the problems that were created by the construction? I, you know, nobody can ever give a guy...
Well, I think that's why, well, I mean, this is basically what we're doing, is like with this world image. I looked at that and thought, that's not going to fly, but you just explain what happened. And I think that's why going through this now, I mean, we could very easily, all this could be accepted because of shoddy workmanship and because of a water leak, because there's a piece of metal between the water pipes and outside, that's crazy. And, and so to me, if I, I would say, okay, well, let them talk, because, yeah, we understand, you know, this is shoddy workmanship, and that's really what we're trying to do, is just when, to have, to have solid reasons, okay, it's water, you know, pipes, that looks bad on paper, but once you explain it, and they come and you say that's what happened, that's why we're regenerating the pack, I think, and that's my purpose.
I did get, right, and I did get ahold of Sarah Fritta at Ohio Southeast Construction Commission, and she basically said, yeah, that they want to work with us and get this worked out, so, you know, she's the one who got me this report, so I'm like, okay, what's, have we gotten in touch with her, or has she gotten in touch with you? So I have her number, so you can get in touch with her, just try and get this straightened out, at least she's the one who charted this.
And I think I shared with the board, you see the letter that I wrote to the OSS?
Yes, absolutely.
Fourteen months ago, or sixteen months ago, it was back in August the thirteenth, okay? That letter came a month after months and, and sometimes years of not getting the answer to the non-hire problem, and the only response I got back from Lois Snyder was, I'm retiring in three days, I'll see you at this, before we go off to the first semester of work. And she did, and I haven't heard another word since, in sixteen months. So what am I supposed to think?
Well, my concern is you do four weeks of work, and then you go find out, you know, a week or two of work, and you need to find out what the planners and what the planners need to work with.
You know, Pete, I, I went back through and, and from ninety-seven to ninety-eight, I figured that'd be a good comparison, okay? And twenty of those projects have been complete, and thirteen are in the process, so that's about thirty-nine percent, you know, to sixty-one percent, so, you know, it's pretty accurate about what you came up with, with forty-four, you know, not, not completed, so...
Well, the reason I went to two thousand five was because it's been about ten years from the two thousand five project.
I thought there may have been a problem with, from ninety-seven to ninety-eight, those new, you know...
Oh, yeah.
So that's why I looked at that, and that's what, you know, it came up pretty much to what you said, so...
So around forty...
Yeah.
I'll start digging up information.
Well, and can, can you get ahold of the state and ask them exactly?
I sure will.
Can we sit something down so the board and, and we can sit down and hash this out and figure, that way we don't have this cloud hanging over us or whatever, we want to have a district that's up and moving, so...
I will do that.
Here's the contact person.
Out of eighteen?
I was still looking up the name.
Motion to go to the executive session? Is there a motion to go to the executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
Call the rule?
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mr. Vasco?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.